Good morning and welcome to our May 21st, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'll ask Commissioner Ed Cremonti for invocation.
I probably would like to say this morning that our sheriff is going to do our invocation. Thank you.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you again and say thank you for this opportunity to come together to discuss the business of our county. We pray that you will be with the leaders of our county this morning as this business is discussed, that you will give us insight as to what the needs of our citizens are, be with the leaders of our state and country as well, as many decisions are being made now that impact all of our lives. We're thankful for the blessings you bestow upon us each day. Be with us now as we go into this meeting. We ask all things in the holy name. Amen.
Commissioner, you can.
Before we do the pledge, I'd just like to say, or make a couple of comments on why we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. Let's keep in mind why there's thousands, hundreds of thousands of men and women in the past 200 years that have sacrificed so much for us to have the freedom that we have in America today. A lot of them gave the ultimate sacrifice. They gave their life for us to be able to meet and sit here and say the pledge to our flag. And also let's keep in mind our men and women that are in service today that are doing the same thing. They never know from one day to the next whether they're going to have to sacrifice their life for us to give the freedom, have the freedom to assemble like we are today and to have the freedom that we have in this country. And then with Memorial Day coming up, let's just keep in mind all of our men and women that have sacrificed so much and the ones that are sacrificing today. Thank you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so can I have a motion for the approval amendment of May 7th?
So.
Motion made, any discussion? All in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Thank you. Discuss the adjustment agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As board aware, during our eight o'clock discussion, we added a walk-on as a budget amendment for Wayne Community College. So that's the only thing we would like to add and put that with the rest of the budget amendments under consent.
Okay. Any board member have any additions? Okay. We'll begin with special presentations. So, Mr. Honeycutt.
First, we'd like to, we honor Ms. Suti Davis and we have...
Morning. So, we didn't let Suti know what we were doing today, so she's learning about it right now. Very grateful to the county commissioners for agreeing to do this with us. So I would read the proclamation honoring Suti Davis this morning. And Suti, I know we could not fit everything that you've done with youth in this, but we're so blessed to have you here in Wayne County and so honored that you've worked with us for so many years. So whereas youth in Wayne County are the future guided by the past and the present to continue the heritage and history of our community. And whereas despite best efforts, youth may stray from their preferred paths. Whereas Teen Court, Communities and Schools, Partnership for Children, and the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council are important programs to help youth get back on track and whereas Suti Davis has dedicated more than 30 years of volunteer time to all four organizations serving in capacities such as executive director and chairwoman. And whereas Teen Court, which Suti Davis has overseen since its inception, is a diversion program for first-time juvenile offenders and provides an alternative to traditional court. And whereas Communities and Schools serves to provide opportunities for students to stay in school, graduate, and be successful in life. And whereas the Partnership for Children provides or connects families with early care and education, health, and family support services needed for young children. And whereas the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council brings together community leaders to provide alternative programming for children at risk. And whereas Suti Davis deserves to be recognized and honored for her selfless efforts to help teach, direct, and save the youth of Wayne County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, does honor Suti Davis and wishes her well in her retirement and travels with her husband. Suti, on behalf of JCPC and the Wayne County Commissioners, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for you gentlemen, but we would wish to present you with this proclamation as well as this beautiful plaque which the Wayne County Commissioners have prepared for you. Thank you for so many years, Suti, of working with us. We look forward to continuing to have you as part of JCPC, but your leadership as chairwoman has been amazing for us and we look forward to the future. So, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you very much. Children are my heart and it has been a joy to work with every kid I've touched in this county. And thank you so much for your recognition.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proclamation and presenting that plaque to honoring Suti Davis.
Need to discuss your comments? If not, all in favor, please, signal five, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is a presentation by Jennifer Pope with the North Carolina Works Career Center.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's our pleasure to be here this morning to chat a little bit about what we're doing at the Wayne County NC Works Career Center. I do have a couple of partners who are here with me from Wayne Community College. We'll talk briefly also about the programs that they're offering, and their slides are also in the package.
Hold up the keyboard and do the slides.
Okay. Thank you. My end of that not working, Carol? So of course our location is 2006 Wayne Memorial Drive. And we have several partners who are onsite with us, and they're all listed there. The main partners for the Wayne County NC Works Career Center are the Division of Workforce Solutions, which includes those of us who work for the state of North Carolina under the Department of Commerce and Wayne Community College. But then the other partners also offer product box services like job corridors, a description. National Council on Aging provides community service, training opportunities to adults who are aged 55 and older who are trying to get back into the workforce. Diversified Opportunities provides services to individuals who have a documented disability. Telemont provides services to individuals who have an agricultural or food processing background. We have the Department of Health and Human Services who are there onsite with us as well. They provide services to the blind. They usually come about once a month. And then we have Johnston County Industries who provides pre-employment transition services to high school students. In addition to the employment services that are provided that are listed there, I'd also like to acknowledge that during this current program year, the Career Center team, which is mostly comprised of the Division of Workforce Solutions staff that I mentioned and also Wayne Community College, we provided more than 36,000 services to over 5,200 job seekers. Our program year is July 1 through June 30. Sorry, let's see. Good, okay. And these are some of the services that we provide. Career counseling, job search assistance, job referrals, lead market information, resume preparation assistance. We provide intensive services to veterans. We also provide priority of services to veterans. And so that means that if a veteran comes in and they're in the lobby waiting to receive services, even if there is a lobby full of non-vets, that vet is pulled next. We show them priority of service in everything we do, including job postings. For the first 48 hours that a job posting is in our system, it's only available to veterans. After that, it's available to the general population. We have the re-entry initiative and we have monthly workshops for individuals who have a criminal background, who are having some difficulty getting back into the workforce. We call those workshops overcoming barriers to employment. And they're scheduled monthly and we share that information with everyone across the city, and it's even posted on Facebook. So we acknowledge that there are some individuals who've had those, who are dealing with issues and trying to get back into the workforce, and we do our best to assist them as well. We also have an HRD class that is held every Friday from 9 to 12. That class is led by our partners at the Community College, and it teaches basic resume preparation assistance, how to complete online applications, and interviewing techniques. And then there are training opportunities available that you'll hear a little bit more about from my other partners. Services to employer, these are some of the things that we provide. We provide to employers. Again, I'd like to acknowledge that during this program year, we've held over 140 hiring events in the Career Center. So those are employers, we have employers who are onsite with us on a weekly basis, some who are scheduled to come in on a monthly basis. We also provide space for employers' use for training and also for interviewing. In addition to those hiring events, we coordinate rapid response events similar to the ones that we've held for Cooper Standard and Excel Home Fashions. We also coordinate job fairs for those individuals who will be losing their jobs due to those, due to plant closures or downsizing, business decisions. This past Saturday, I also worked with SPX on a job fair that they held onsite. Yesterday, we had a job fair for those workers who will be dislocated from Excel Home Fashions. And then this coming Wednesday, we will participate in a rapid response event that was coordinated by the Career Center staff for those workers of Cooper Standard due to their recent announcement about their closure. NC Works Online is our state labor exchange system for workers who are computer savvy, who feel like they can maneuver the system on their own. Our website address is ncworks.gov, but for those who would like one-on-one attention, we do have career advisors who are knowledgeable, who understand our labor market, and who can provide information to those job seekers to help them return to the workforce. I failed to mention that there's also a smart, a mobile app for those smartphone users. So before I hand it over to my next partner, which is going to be Kathy Stifels from Wayne Community College, I'd like to say that our unemployment rate in Wayne County right now is 4.4%. However, that does still represent a little over 2,300 people who are unemployed, workable adults who are still out there, who are not employed at this time. And we do have employment and training opportunities available, and we look forward to providing those services to those individuals. Just last week, we had over 200 visitors to the Career Center. That is down from the numbers that we saw last year, whenever we would see 80 or 90 in the course of one business day. So, but there are still lots of people who are unemployed, and we encourage them to come out and seek services through the NC Works Career Center. So as you saw on the previous slide, we have several agencies who are located onsite with us. But today, I want to acknowledge the services that are provided through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act with our partners, Wayne Community Colleges. So Kathy Stifels is going to speak next briefly about that program.
Good morning. The WIWA, which is the Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act, was, is a federally-funded program, and it was signed into law in July of 2014. Prior to that, you might have heard of WIA, and prior to that, it was JTPA, and prior to that, it was the CETA program. So there's always been a training program, they've just renamed it and revamped it. WIWA is designed to help job seekers find employment, education, training. We offer support services so they can succeed in the labor market and make a living wage, above a living wage is what our goal is. We also assist with the rapid response. We have two different grants. We have the adult program, which is based on household income. It primarily works with folks that are low-income. We look at income for the past six months for eligibility. And as far as dislocated workers, that's folks that have lost their jobs due to downsizing, business closure, if they have lost a job to do no fault of their own and they're receiving unemployment. We sit down with each person that's interested in the program, and we counsel them on what their experience is. We can provide assessments, just in, we have ones that they can use to determine what program might be good for them. We can offer training for up to two years for an associate's degree. We can't do college transfer, but we can do certification programs. We can do, we have, just last week, we had numerous graduates at Wayne Community. We had 11 students receive degrees, four certificates, two diplomas, one with a degree and certificates, and another one with a degree and a diploma. We assist with the tuition, the fees, supplies, books, and if necessary, we can offer assistance with transportation, just guidance all along, and just anything we can do as far as helping them so they can become employed and good contributing with society. The program is not an entitlement program. We have to look at what skills the person has. That's the reason we do all the assessments, to make sure that they are able to do the program because there is a time limit of up to two years to receive their training if they decide to do associate's degree. We try to look at what the hourly rates are for jobs and use the labor market information and anything we can to help them become informed and make an informed decision for what they want to do. Any questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand you say this stems back all the way to CETA?
Hmm. Yeah, it's been around a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Let me, and I might have missed this, but while the folk are in your training, am I assuming that they were, are, or were collecting unemployment?
Some are, some have, and we could even work with those that have exhausted their benefits. We have folks, the dislocated workers, like the folks from Excel and Cooper Standard, they're dislocated workers, and even because we know that they're being laid off, we can already start working with them, and if they want to start training, we can do that. So that's part of the dislocated worker program.
Unemployment only lasts for 12 weeks now, and so if they're getting unemployment at the end of the 12 weeks, being enrolled in training does not extend the number of weeks that they can receive unemployment benefits.
So it does not extend?
It does not extend it. The only way that could happen is if they're actually enrolled in what we call the Trade Adjustment Assistance Program. If they lost their jobs due to trade, like foreign competition or something like that, but in that case, a petition would have to have been certified through the United States Department of Labor, and that's an entire process that the company or either three workers would go through. And that would include additional income support. But just for the program that Kathy's talking about today, for the intended purposes of this, there is no extension of unemployment beyond the 12 weeks.
And this, I'm dating myself whenever I, I'm putting a chronological stamp on myself. When I was 22, I had an opportunity, I think CETA was in place, but a company program that the acronym was MDTA, Manpower Development Training Act, that back in the 60s. And in lieu of unemployment, for a year, we went to school and got the equivalent of some unemployment rather than, you know, have to go down there and make up the story about what you did. We got into a program, and that provided us with skill training, and so when you use the word CETA, it was back in that same timeframe. I don't remember what the revenue stream was for CETA, but I'm guessing there are no programs out there right now that match that scenario, that...
There are no programs that I'm aware of through the NC Works Career Center system that would allow for a weekly payment in addition to school beyond those 12 weeks of unemployment that a person would qualify for. You mentioned making up things, I guess you meant work search contacts for receiving unemployment. If you are enrolled in school under the program that Kathy's talking about, you're exempt from work search. You don't have to make up any contacts. You don't have to go out and say that you did things that you didn't. You're in school, and that's enough for us. That's considered commission-approved training.
Well, just let me say thank you for what you're doing. There's no such thing as training that's not worth having. Any skilled training is worth having, and I hear you saying you're partnering with Wayne Community College. I'm glad to hear that. And please continue the effort to get skilled training to people because that moves us from the poverty cycle to stability. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrea Tyson is going to speak briefly on OJT, which might be similar to what you're asking about, Commissioner Cremonti. It's on the job training. It's still not a program that you actually get a payment while you're in school learning a trade, but she has some very valuable information to share, and then that will conclude our presentation. We'll give you an opportunity to ask any other, any additional questions at her completion.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Tyson. I'm the Business Services Representative at Wayne Community College. So, excuse me. My primary role is to go out into the community and speak with employers about on-the-job training. And with that is, when you ask about what on-the-job training is, it's the ideal opportunity to fill an employer's hiring need and provide a skilled worker with a job. We insist employers who are looking to expand their businesses and who need additional staff. It also allows the employers to help their businesses save money while turning skilled workers into valuable, productive employees. So with that being said, again, I go out to the, into the community and I speak with employers about on-the-job training. It's a win-win situation because we pay, we reimburse wages up between 50 and 75%, depending upon how many employees are in that company. And eligible applicants for the OJT program are workers displaced to a plant closure or downsizing. We have some young people that are in the workforce that have no experience. We also have some recent graduates that don't have hands-on experience, veterans and eligible military spouses. And then we have other workers that just need some training. You may have someone that was employed at a company for 20-some odd years and then they got laid off. So that would be the other workers. And then we have applicants who have met the WIWA requirements that are enrolled in our WIWA program. And this program is, you know, I have it for Wayne County, but it can, I can travel outside Wayne County to enlist employers as well.
Any questions?
This is our contact information. You've got my name and address, an email address, telephone number, Kathy's and Andrea's as well. Do we have any, do you have any questions for us at this time? Okay. Thank you so much for your time and opportunity. We do want all of the residents of Wayne County to know that we have employment and training opportunities available. So please come out to the Career Center, access the system however you can, by telephone, in person, online at our website address, which is ncworks.gov, because there are jobs available, and there are also training opportunities available. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Honeycutt, we've got a fine-looking group of young men here.
We have a fine-looking group of young men here. Next, I want to introduce our IT and projects manager, Ryan Preble, who has a very special connection to this team.
Morning. I'm not going to take up a lot of time, I'm going to let these guys talk. We have a great example of Wayne County youth sports and how it's progressed. It's a great team that has traveled all over the state and has had some great accomplishments. And I'm not going to stand up here and talk. I'm going to introduce you to their president and their coach. They're going to talk at length about their exploits. But this is the Wayne County United Soccer Club U-13 team, and I'm going to ask Brian to come up and Coach, you'll come on up. You've got to at least stand up here with them. Brian will be all the time.
Good morning. Appreciate the time this morning. My name is Brian Gary. I'm the president of Wayne County United Soccer Club, joined by Kevin Martin here, as well as some other fellow board members, Gabby Blalock and Kelly Pavarzki. And we want to also have many friends, family, and parents also representing us today. I want to give you a little bit of our accomplishments and what we've done. This team has compiled 31 wins, five ties, and one loss in regulation. We have 17 boys on our team that are here in personal attendance or in spirit here. We were the tournament champs. This team is tournament champs in the Explosion Cup, as well as the Adidas Clash, and we were runners-up in the Beast of the East and the Raleigh Showcase. And most recently, we finished as runners-up for the North Carolina State Kepner President's Cup, where there were 32 other teams represented from across the state in this particular age group. We're currently ranked 14th in the state and 83rd nationally as well. So we wanted to present this team to you today. So, boys, if you could, could stand. We'd like to ask one of our team members to come forward and present something for you.
On behalf of the U-13 Wayne County United Soccer Club, we would like to present this plaque to the Commissioner of Wayne County.
That would be great, yes.
All right, it's hot in here. I'm taking off my coat jacket.
I'm taking off my coat jacket. Getting ready to get in.
Give everybody to get back in. Okay, we're ready for public comments time. Anybody in the audience like to stand before us? Any comments?
Good morning. My name is Barry Merrill. I live at 432 Club Knowles Road in Dudley. My phone number is 919-922-1499. I pray for you, gentlemen. I know you have tough jobs and can't always please everyone. I encourage you today, please. I think Mr. Mayo last year was quoting a famous person and said, "It's always the right time to do the right thing." Last year, this board, at this time, including their budget, a pay increase for the teachers. And that was the right thing to do at that point in time. And you felt that you needed to pass a property tax increase in order to fund that. And it was the right thing to do. We made a change and we pulled it off there. We said, "We'd like to try another way of financing this and we'd like to try to pass a sales tax referendum." That didn't work out. And that was unfortunate. Here we are at budget time again and teacher pay increases is on the boards. But some, and I understand, say it's not a great time to pass a tax increase. It was the right thing to do last year and it's the right thing to do this year. Wayne Community College needs a new air conditioning system. We're spending more money on baling wire and duct tape to keep that going. We're spending good taxpayer money to keep that air conditioning system going. The right thing to do is to replace that air conditioning system. There's no money to do that, understand? But still, it's the right thing to do. One of the things that we have done in this county is rather than pass tax increases, we have dipped into the fund balance. And we've gone through some fund balance in the last seven years to try to keep taxes down. You passed a five-cent tax decrease when this board took over eight years ago, seven years ago. And for six years, the taxpayers of Wayne County have enjoyed a tax rate five cents lower than it was before you took office. I don't think that would have happened if there hadn't been a new board elected. So our taxpayers have enjoyed some good things. There's some discussion that this is not a good time to pass a tax increase because of our farmers. As I understand, I was talking with Mr. Cromarty about this a little bit yesterday. There is something called a present use value, which helps farmers. And when you pass a tax increase, a property tax increase, you can offer properly, by state regulations. NC State has some experts to talk about how you, as county commissioners, can pass a property tax increase and not put that on the farmers. So I think that's the right thing to do. I think that's the right thing to do. I encourage you to pray about, Mr. Gurley and I were talking last night, pray about what the right thing to do is. And again, try to do the right thing for our teachers. They need it for 14 years. This would be the 15th year that they have gone without a pay increase from Wayne County. It was worse because you promised it last year and pulled it back. And that just, it really makes it much more important this year. We want to work with our school system to help them to continue to grow and to prosper and to do some good things. And they're working on it. They're cleaning up some things for us. So please support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? If not, public comments time is closed. And we'll go with unfinished business, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to turn it over to our Assistant County Manager, Chip Crumpler. Staff has been working very hard about looking at our EMS billing company. As you're aware, we looked at that last year and for some changes, we had to put that off a year, but we're ready this year to make recommendations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chip.
A request for proposals to do our EMS Wayne Net billing was sent out March 26, 2019. Currently, the county had been with EMS consultants for 17 years. We received nine responses from the RFP. And on May the 7th, we interviewed six of the candidates. After meeting with those, after that meeting and interviewing those six candidates, we narrowed it down to two finalists. And of those finalists, we visited two of their customers in person. The committee was made up of Mr. Honeycutt, myself, Brian Smith, Nanette Sutton, and Noel Woods. We felt that the customer service and the review we did, and we made site visits to both Cabarrus County and Edgcombe County. We'd like to unanimously recommend EM Tech Revenue Management to provide this service for Wayne County. We feel that their customer service, their in-house training and cost savings that they provide will ultimately bring the county many benefits and made them the clear choice. Attached to this memo that you have in your packages is the proposal comparison sheet for all the companies that submitted. Their rates are listed based upon their proposed calls for collection, the panel interviews, and our site visit to Tarboro in Cabarrus County. We are confident that they will bring increased revenue and service to Wayne County EMS and Wayne Net. And with your approval, the county manager will begin negotiating the contract with EM Tech Revenue Management and bring it back to this board for final approval. And please let us know if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question. I just want to thank y'all for looking at this because, you know, we've been kicking this can down the road for a while. And like, we hadn't kicked it very far, but this is a start. And I just want to thank you and everyone that was involved in trying to solve a problem that we've had for several years. I mean, when you've got a billing company that you've been dealing with as long as we've been dealing with the other company and they sue us because we won't look elsewhere. I mean, that pretty much tells you. It does me. It pretty much clarifies, you know. I think y'all made the right decision.
They get a motion?
So do we. Listen, Chip.
All right. Motion made in discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, consent agenda, we reviewed it at 8 o'clock briefing. They get a motion for approval.
Turn it over.
Motion made in discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Mitch Bergulio, who is with the Davenport Company. And we want to, number one, thank Mitch and Ted Cole for their work and their support of what we're trying to do and really diving deep into our finances and making sure that the financial policies of Wayne County are really visibly prudent for this county and they're the right thing to do. And if we are always in that right place, that we are always, our finances will be in good shape, for lack of better words. But again, we appreciate what the work Davenport does for us. And also, I want to thank Allison Spate and her staff. Ted and Mitch needed a lot of additional information. And their staff really just provide a lot of additional work. And we appreciate that. So with that said, I'll turn it to Mitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Honeycutt and Chairman members. Thank you for having us today. Ted sends his regards. And I'm glad to be here with you today. Mitch Bergulio from Davenport and Company. We are the county's financial advisor. And as Mr. Honeycutt said, we've been working with Ms. Spate and her team and Mr. Honeycutt and his team to help analyze the CIP for the county. And in doing so, take a look back at the county's historical financial results and where we go from here in terms of funding the future CIP. We've got a lot of details. We do have a book in front of you. And we've got a lot of details in the appendix for you. A detailed summary of the CIP by project is in Appendix A. We've got the solid waste CIP in Appendix B, your existing debt detail in Appendix C, and your rating agency reports in Appendix D. I'm not going to go through all that information. I do want to hit some of the highlights of the first 20 pages of this presentation. I know you all have a busy agenda today with the budget discussion coming behind. So I'll go quickly, but please feel free to jump in, stop me along the way. And if you want to dig into any details, I'm happy to go and talk as long as you all would want to. But I'll try to move through this quickly for you all to get on to additional business. So very quickly on page two, I just want to let you know what we've done here in this presentation for you. We have taken a look back at the county's credit ratings. And we're going to look at some peer comparisons to give you all some perspective on your historical financial performance. Have taken a little bit of a dive into the general fund financial performance and gone through a history of that and how you've evolved over the years there. We're going to look at your existing debt profile. That's going to be a piece of the discussion for the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. And then we're going to look, we're going to look into detail into that capital improvement plan. And when we talk about a CIP or a capital improvement plan, that is the county's plan for funding capital projects over the next five years. And we'll take a look at that here in greater detail shortly. So at a high level, on page four, the county has a credit rating from Moody's Investor Service and Standard Impores. Those are the national rating agencies that rate the county. And those credit ratings ultimately play a major impact in the interest rate that the county receives on bonds or loans that the county issues to fund capital projects. You're currently rated AA2, AA. That is a very good credit rating. That is two steps away from the highest possible credit rating that you can have. So you all have done a very good job of managing yourselves historically. You're set up very well to access the capital markets, to borrow money to fund capital projects if you choose to do so. So you're in very good shape to access the markets and to receive a good interest rate when you do access those markets. Going forward in this presentation, when we think about funding a CIP, we want to make sure that the projects that we fund, the method in which we fund them are maintaining these good credit ratings so that you continue to have that access to good interest rates and the access to borrow funds if you choose to do so. So one of the things that we do as part of this analysis is we compare you to a series of peers to make sure that you continue to stay in line with those other rated counties, both nationally and in North Carolina. And in order to do that, we subscribe to a database that is published by Moody's Investor Service. That is one of the rating agencies which you all are rated by. So the data that we're using for our peer comparisons is the exact same data that the rating analysts who review your credit rating are looking at themselves as well. So at very high level on page five, you have a good credit rating because you are controlling the things that you can control. You're managing your fund balance well. You're managing your debt issuances very well. And you have adopted a series of financial policies and you've proven your management is strong and able to stay within the parameters that you set for yourselves financially and otherwise. The one piece of the rating that you can't necessarily control is the economy. That represents about 30% of your rating. You can make some policy decisions, economic development initiatives to help control that economy over the long term. But there's nothing that you all could do today as part of the budget process to make a change in that economy score to your credit rating immediately. So that's why it's important to make sure that we're keeping in mind the other components that you do control, finances, management, and debt as part of the decision-making process. And you all have done a very good job of that historically. We can see that on page seven when we look at your historical general fund financial performance. I'm not going to go into too much of the details, but at a very high level, the graph on the top left shows your historical expenses in the bar chart and your operating revenues in the blue line over top of it. And what we see is that the dark green bars are your operating expenses and the brown bars are your debt service. And the blue line, your operating revenues, are above the operating expenses plus debt service. What that says is you all have been able to maintain an operationally balanced budget, a structurally balanced budget operationally. Your annual revenues are exceeding your annual expenses. That's a very good thing. That's a positive for the rating agencies and investors and anyone looking at you, that you're able to cover your annual expenses through your annual revenues. You don't have to dip into fund balance to cover your annual operations. The light green bars on top are the capital expenditures that you all have made going back to 2013. You all have invested significantly in capital over the last five years. Since 2014, you've invested over $110 million in capital projects, $37 million of which has been through fund balance and cash funding of major projects. This does not include the smaller projects or your annual pay-as-you-go capital. We're just looking at major initiatives that you all have funded over the last five years in these numbers. So $37 million of cash-funded capital projects is very impressive. A third of the major projects you've funded are with cash. And what that has led to is a drawing down of your fund balance. And you can see that in the bottom graph here, where your fund balance in 2014 was capped out. The highest fund balance you had was $70 million in total and pulled that down to just over $40 million at this point. So again, invested over $37 million in major capital projects with cash funding.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to expand upon that because I've heard several people that have been rather concerned that we have drawn down fund balance. And as our advisor, do you see that that being a prudent decision? And from this commissioner's standpoint, my thought was, if the dollars are in the fund balance, we were receiving one-quarter of a percent interest on those dollars. Whereas if we converted that over for needed capital improvements in the county, it basically is converting the asset of cash over to capital improvements. But we're not borrowing any dollars. If we borrowed the dollars, we had three, three-and-a-half percent.
Yes, sir. You're 100% right. And I think the other key component to that is if we look at page eight, where are you with your fund balance? If you've got the fund balance to spend, then that's an option. If you don't have fund balance to spend, then it's not. And you all did. You all have a fund balance policy of a minimum of 14% unassigned general fund, 14% of unassigned general fund expenditures. You are well above that at over 30% of expenditures. And you spent that down to presently now at about 20%. That 20% is still very much in line with your peers. And on page eight, the bottom-right graph, this is the first peer comparative that we look at, national AAA, AA1, and AA2 medians. So the midpoint of all of those ratings are in the light green bars nationally. Dark green is North Carolina AAA, AA1. Carolina AAA, AA1 and AA2. You all are a AA2, so you fall into those AA2 bars. And again, we're looking at the median, so this is the midpoint of the data for all the counties that fall into those rating categories. You all are right in line with both the national and North Carolina medians at the 20%, slightly over 20% level. So you're, you're right where you need to be when we look at your rating peers. So I think, Mr. Doherty, yes, you had the fund balance, you were in excess of your policy, and you chose to use some of that on capital projects, which is certainly a very good use of fund balance. If we're going to use fund balance, like to see it used on one-time projects. If you use it to fund an operating expense, which is a recurring expense, fund balance is a one-time revenue. If you use it to fund a recurring expense, it's going to go away very quickly. So using one-time revenues like fund balance to fund one-time expenses like capital is a very good use of those revenue sources, and you had the revenue source and fund balance to use over the years. So done a nice job of that in staying above your policy and staying in line with the medians. So yes, I think that was certainly a worthwhile decision to invest in capital using that fund balance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think the question is, is that what is, what is the unencumbered fund balance? The fund balance, a general of 40 million means nothing to me because part of that is encumbered, it's mandated, and the bottom, the bottom line is, is that we have spent down our fund balance the seven and a half years that I've been on this board, but my concern is this, and we saw this. One of the reasons our fund balance is possibly lower than what it could have been is that things come out of the woodwork from the legislature and the federal government that we're not aware of. And that has affected the fund balance since I've been on this board. So to me, the comparison of other counties is fine, but it has nothing to do with what we as Wayne County would like to see. And I'm, I'm very, very conservative, being a farmer raised in Wayne County, is that spend as you go if you can. So bottom line is, is that my concern is still, and Commissioner Doherty is, is talking, I as one that's concerned about our fund balance, I'm concerned about what we don't see coming out of our legislature and federal government, that we are going to be responsible for funding. And a lot of this, a lot of this has to do with possibly one big ingredient is education. So bottom line is, is that that's what my concern is. I think we still, and also Ted Cole, his last, his last presentation he did to us, why is it that he said that going forward, we, we cannot continue to be in the position that we're in right now, what we've done in the past three, four, five years, we cannot suspend, extend that moving forward? Why is that?
Because you, because you've used that excess fund, and that was going to be my next point, is, is you've, you've spent down your unassigned fund balance, and right now you asked about where are you on an unassigned basis, unencumbered basis, it's about $20 million.
Right.
That represents about 20% of your budget. So it's slightly above your policy of a minimum of 14%.
That's correct.
But you always want to maintain a little bit of cushion there, and the 20% is right in line with your peers. So what I, what I think that says is you had the fund balance to spend, you utilized it to fund capital projects, avoided issuing debt, but now going forward, you've kind of pulled down that excess fund balance to this point. Going forward, going to have to look at other ways to fund capital projects in the future as opposed to just, just spending down the fund balance because we've already tapped into that resource. Unless, unless we grow back our fund balance and then can use it again, that may become a resource again in the future. But right now, I think where you're at is a very healthy position with fund balance, but don't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily want to see it go much lower than where it is currently.
Well, my point is this, the general public, the general public is going to look at that 40 million, and that's all they're going to see. They're not going to see the actual amount that we have. So I don't want us to present a false picture here.
Yes, sir.
We do not have $40 million for anything here in Wayne County. We don't have that, even though it's in the fund balance. So I think that the average citizen, and I'm, I'm an average citizen just because I'm elected official, but that figure of 40 million is what's going to stick in the public's mind. We need to do a better job, all of us, is trying to inform the citizens, and newspapers are a great place to do it, is exactly what is our unencumbered fund balance that we have to spend. Mr. Herring?
I'm calling on you, please, some help.
Thank you.
I, I would like, just back up a moment ago, if I understand correctly, you said that anything further, we would need to look at other sources to be able to fund those. And I suppose, I guess your meaning to borrow it, therefore we incur some debt service.
Certainly, you know, debt, debt funding could be one option, pay-as-you-go capital funding could be an option. I mean, we're going to look at the, we're going to look at some potential funding sources for your CIP, for your Capital Improvement Plan, when we, when we dig into that here shortly. But yes, sir, debt, debt funding is certainly one option if you all would like to consider.
And of course, if you incur debt service, you're going to have to develop revenue to be able to pay that off.
Yes, sir, and you all have taken some steps in your budget to, to cover your existing debt service, and there is some room going forward to, to take on additional debt service or capital within your current revenues. And one of the things that we're going to look at is, is the room that you have, the cash flow that you have available, is that enough to cover the proposed CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, or are there additional resources needed to fund?
And I think it's something we've talked about before, that do we have capacity for debt? Yes, but can we afford the debt is the question without having to do additional tax increases to pay off that debt. But capacity is saying, yes, we do have capacity, but can we afford it is the question. I think we will have to do with respect to budget and moving forward.
And that's where we're headed.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just real quick, that this, none, is any of this have a projection as to what our revow has?
As part of the budget. I've got that as part of the budget.
Okay, all right. My, my question is, is that on the general fund, we know that we, we had a slight, small increase in the revow?
Yes, sir.
I want to know, and we'll probably cover that in the budget, what that figure is?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know how, what additional revenue that the revow is going to bring to the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just before we leave this page, I want to mention, we've talked about the capital funding, about over 110 million for major capital projects. About 37 million came from general fund balance, and then the remainder of that came from two different debt issuances. One back in 2014, a bank loan to fund two schools was over $30 million, and then a similarly sized limited obligation bond back in 2017, which funded a combination of county and school capital projects. So before we get to the Capital Improvement Plan, do you want to just take a quick look back at your existing tax-supported debt profile? Again, if we want to consider debt as a, as a piece or a potential funding source for the Capital Improvement Plan, want to understand where we're at today. And so you all have roughly 73.4 million of principal or par amount of debt outstanding today. 56 million was, of that represents funding for school projects. 17.2 million of that represents funding for county-related projects. And one of the things that we've talked about, that I, that I just mentioned is the capital funding through the debt issuances, and that happened in 2014, and then again in 2017. And so when we look back at the county's debt service historically, we see that this increase in the annual debt payments over the last five years. That is due to funding over $70 million of capital projects through debt issuance. That peaked in 2019, and going forward, it's, it's declining in the future. So that decline in your annual debt service, that's going to be one of the places where you may have some additional capacity to fund future capital projects. You've, you've taken the steps to fund your annual debt service now, and so as that annual debt service declines, that may create opportunities in the future to fund capital through either debt service or pay-as-you-go cap.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The interesting point on here is that out of the total debt of the county, which was 73 and a half million.
Yes, sir.
76% of that debt is for schools. That's, that's the interesting point on this page, that I didn't have the percentage, but when I do that, so the debt that's basically outstanding from the county, 75, 76% of that is actually for schools.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Only 25% of that is actually for county functions and departments and so forth. Thank you.
So now, getting into the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, that's the five-year look at funding capital projects. The first thing we wanted to do is understand what kind of cash flows you have available on an annual basis based upon your existing budget. And I'm not going to go into detail, this is a lot of numbers, it's very small, but I think you all have seen this type of information in the past. What I will say is that column Q represents the dollars that you have, excuse me, based upon your current budget going forward, and that's about 400-plus thousand dollars per year going forward, and that's growing over time in column Q. Those are the cash flows that we have available right now to fund capital projects that are unencumbered dollars every year. Those are being, those are being created through that decline in your annual debt service.
But those surpluses start in '21.
Yes, sir. Those surpluses start in '21. We, we're assuming that you're going to have a balanced budget essentially in 2020 for your debt service. This doesn't include any future pay-as-you-go capital projects. This is a focus on the county debt service. And I should be very specific about this. We're looking at the county CIP and the county debt service. There is a separate analysis like this for the schools that, that models the school funding agreement, and once we have additional detail on potential school capital projects, we can revisit that. But this, these cash flows are specific to the county and the county-related projects that we're looking at this morning. So when looking at the draft county CIP, it is a five-year plan. It's about $51 million over the five years. When you adopt a CIP, you're adopting a plan. You're not, you're not, that, that plan is not set in stone. It is just that it's a plan. The only thing that you would be funding as part of the budget process is fiscal year 2020. So fiscal year 2020 would be adopted and funded through the budget process. The future years are a plan. And when we look at, when we look at fiscal year 2020, it's about 11 and a half million dollars of capital projects coming from a number of different sources. There are some outside funding sources that are available to the county. And so when we think about the cash flows that the county has to come up with, we're really looking at line 15 and line 16, debt funding and pay-as-you-go capital funding. And Mr. Carmody, as you asked earlier, we are assuming 6.3 million of debt funding as part of this plan. You do have debt capacity, so it is reasonable for you all to be considering the use of debt. The question is, Mr. Honeycutt said, is will it be affordable going forward? And we're going to revisit both of those questions. But we do have 6.3 million of debt funding programmed in for fiscal year 2020, and then there's 2.2 million of pay-as-you-go capital or use of fund balance in 2020. Now, what I will tell you is of that, of that 2.2 million, 1, 1,025,000 represents annual funding that you all have discussed and may consider as part of the budget for vehicles and equipment and IT functions. That would be something that you all could choose to build into your budget and fund on an annual basis at a level annual funding of 1,225,000. And you can see that in a little more detail on page 14. This is the, this is the detail of the uses of funds by department. I'm not going to go through this in great detail. Happy to follow up. But I think what's interesting on this page is we've highlighted for you the projects that are, that we've assumed to be debt-funded. The gold boxes are the short-term debt. Those are for, that is for voting equipment and software for finance and planning. That's assumed to be amortized over five years, short-term financing. The blue boxes are long-term financing, and those include projects for emergency management, 911, and DSS facilities. So in total, again, in total, we're looking to issue, we're looking to fund about 6.3 million of debt, long-term debt over 15 years. That's a very conservative amortization structure, and short-term debt over five years. We have layered that proposed debt service in on top of your existing debt profile on page 18, or excuse me, page 16. And then on page 17, we take a look back at your financial policies and some peer comparisons to make sure that as we're funding this, this proposed debt, are we in compliance with our policies, and are we in line with, with potential peer rating, peer rating count? And long story short is you're in compliance, well within compliance of all your policies. You look good compared to your peers, even with this proposed debt issuance. So as Mr. Honeycutt alluded to earlier, you have debt capacity. Debt is a reasonable tool if you choose to use it to help in funding the CIP based upon your policies, based upon your peer comparisons. The question is, is it affordable? And that's what we've looked at here on page 18. Page 18 looks at the proposed debt service, the annual principal and interest payments in column C. I realize this is very hard to read, so I apologize. But in column C, that's where we layered in the proposed principal and interest payments. In columns D, E, and F, we have the, D, E, F, and G, we have funded the county's Capital Improvement Plan, that the pay-as-you-go capital component of the Capital Improvement Plan. Now, one thing I will point out is that the annual pay-go amounts includes the annual funding of vehicles and the annual funding of IT equipment, as I believe you all have discussed. And we've also assumed that going forward, you're going to be able to smooth out your other pay-as-you-go capital items to the average of approximately $1 million a year. In talking with staff, that's something that I know that you all are working towards. So we've assumed that you, or you're able to smooth out your future CIP expenditures to an average of $1 million per year, which is in line with historical expenses. When we do that, when we layer in those CIP expenditures, both debt service and pay-as-you-go capital, what we see is over the next 15 to 16 years, there's a shortfall, and it's over a long period of time, but there's a shortfall of about $12 million in total to fund this CIP, assuming that the, that future CIP funding is carried forward. That would be the equivalent of about 1.8 pennies in fiscal year 2022. So shortfall of about $12 million. The shortfall starts in fiscal year 2022, and, and the equivalent of 1.8 pennies would solve that shortfall to fund this CIP.
Lot of words, but I'm understanding you. You're saying based upon our CIP, it will be a shortfall.
Yes, sir.
And, and in order to prevent the shortfall, we would actually have to have a, a tax increase of 1.8 cents.
Yes, sir. You'd have to come, you'd have to come up with revenue equivalent to 1.8 pennies. So that would be, if you chose to do that through a tax increase, it would be 1.8 cents.
Okay.
So that's the CIP as it's laid out today.
And that's just to find the county-generated portion of the big picture?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And you said that the school, that I catch you right, that you have another category for the schools?
Yes, sir. The schools are not funded through this, this budget. They are funded through a separate budget, and we have a separate model set up for that. And as we get additional details on And as we get additional details on potential projects and potential capital improvement plan for the schools, we can model that up and show the results of that.
So that's not, all right. You don't have it so that it shows it. Okay. That's down the road.
Yes, sir. We, we do not have that information at this time, but once we do, we're happy to drop it in and share that with you.
Well, that's, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That's been my concern is that we don't, at this point, know what, what the schools are needing. And in my, that's why I'm dwell, still dwelling back on our fund balance. As of right now, as far as I know, the legislature a few years ago passed legislation to reduce the classroom size from twenty-one to seventeen, but provided zero funding for brick and mortar. We're still responsible for that. I don't have anything that says that the legislature has come up with any monies. That's why I'm concerned about our fund balance is that, that's one of the keys. And you might say, hey, you know, the old man's off his rocker. But I'm telling you, if you don't have it on the hip, then you've got to scramble. Maybe a bigger tax increase. This tax increase could go from one-point-eight to five-point-eight. But our fund balance is critical for us to be able to take care of some things that we can't see that's coming down the pike. I run my business that way. All these business people up here run their business that way. So those are my concerns. The, the, the school budget or whatever it is is going to have a huge effect on what we're looking at here. That's, that's all I have.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think one of the critical things that, that you, I think that you brought out was that, well, we got this one pot of money back here someplace. But county operations, school operations, and let me back up. The various things on the county operation that I know there are people sitting in the audience right now wondering, what are we going to do about certain things that's been on the table for discussion that appear county operation, not school operation? So as Mr. Mayo accurately points out, there are things sort of staring, although maybe just a little bit distant down the road, they're still looking at how this is going to be done. I, just for, if I make no mistake, there are planning groups that are looking at what, how the population is and all that and things where the school system is concerned. We won't know, we won't know what we will need until somewhere down the road when we get specific numbers, facts, directions. And thank you. Your company's going to have to be on top of, and be, have access to all that data so that we can accurately determine what we may be capable of doing or what is logical to do. I, I'm trying to quote my manager and, and what you said.
Yes, sir. I mean, I think that, that's ultimately the, the question, you know, that we, we look at when we fund these CIPs. There's two things. Is do you have the capacity to fund capital in terms of your policies and your ratios? And do you have the affordability to fund capital? Those are two separate questions but are linked. And, and so when we look at you all right now as a county, your total overall debt profile, you have capacity that within your policies compared to your peers, you have capacity. You've managed yourselves very well. Really, the question for you all, and it's all, it's typically the question for others as well, is, is it affordable? Based upon your cash flows, are you able to fund that, that capital? And that is, that is going to be the question for you all. We see that on the county side that based upon the CIP as it's laid out today, there is a shortfall. It's the equivalent of about one-point-eight pennies in fiscal year 2022. And that's where it comes down to. You may have capacity under your policies, certainly. But the affordability and the cash flow side of things is where the choke point is for funding future capital.
Mr. Chairman. Let me piggyback on Mr. Mayo here. He's correct. We do have, you're saying we have capacity, but we have to maintain some capacity because of a mandate that we are under, that we have only provided eight additional classrooms of the fifty that is estimated that we would need to fulfill the requirement of the state to reduce class size. Those numbers came from the school of stating they would need fifty additional classrooms. If we've provided eight, then we're down to forty-two that we're going to have to. And doing some quick numbers at, on average, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars per classroom, you're looking at nine million dollars that this county is going to have to borrow in order to fulfill that requirement. We haven't seen a plan yet to fulfill that requirement. But again, we have to, in the back of our minds, have got to keep that nine million dollars in the works because at some point, we're going to have to fulfill it or be in violation of the mandate. And that's coming right around the corner. So even though we have capacity, we've got to kind of keep about nine or ten million to one side until we get the final, final word on those requirements. And again, there may be some dollars that are available through a bond that has been bounced around on the state level in regards to facility needs, and that may answer some of that. But in the meantime, until we hear that, we've got to kind of keep that to one side. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all.
Good. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Honeycutt.
All right.
Front and center be positive.
Are you going to give us the real numbers now? Oh, the recommended budgets.
Um, what I wanted to do to you today is really just give you a quick overview of where we're at on the budget. Because again, this is the manager's recommended budget. You know, under general statute, the manager is the budget officer, and he has to provide you a balanced budget by June first of every year. So this is meeting that statute. However, once this presented, then we've got workshops that are scheduled. So I, I don't want the public to think, and I want anybody to think that this is the final budget. But this is the manager's recommended budget, and this gives us a starting place of where to move forward. Things will change in this budget. It changes every year, every community. But want to make sure that people don't take this document, this six inches of budget that we have right now as gospel because there's a lot of revisions that will occur between now and when this budget is approved. So with that being said, what we're looking at to start off with, and, and again, as we've discussed, there is a revowlet year. And our rebound number, revenue neutral rate number is point-six-four-nine-eight, which is really about a penny and a half. So, or excuse me, a penny. I'm sorry. A little more than a penny. But the recommendation that you have in this budget is that we keep our tax rate at sixty-six and three-fifths cent per one-hundred valuation. Again, there's some good things in this. In the past couple of years, we have used fund balance to really, you know, kind of be that bridge to balance off, you know, expenditures and revenues. Even though on the operating side, we've always come in expenditures under revenue. So, you know, that's given us a little cushion. But again, we're recommended using two-point-nine-five million in fund balance to balance off the budget. But if you look at it, it's down from four-point-four million that we used last year, and it is down from five-point-six million that we used in twenty-seventeen, eighteen. So we're heading on the right trend. And, and also, if you look at what we're planning to use the two-point-nine-five million on, most of that is two million dollars worth of capital. So we're really getting almost to the point where we are, you know, revenues will equal expenditures without having to balance off a fund balance. Again, just for comparisons, note, accountants love to use comparisons. These are the surrounding counties' tax rates that, from Wayne County, Wilson, Johnson, Lenore, Green, Duplin, and Sampson. Not sure what they're doing this year moving forward, but this is the eighteen-nineteen tax rate that was approved. And again, we're in very good shape compared to our surrounding counties. Again, schools. We understand the schools have issues. We, we know that we've got to do a lot of negotiation on the schools on this moving forward. But right now, recommended in the budget is a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase to the general operating budget. And again, this is based upon and agreed upon formula that we have had. And I appreciate the work that George Wood did and also the school board in coming up with this fund formula. It takes into account growth and it takes into account the revow. So if you take all those things into consideration, it's about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase with revow and growth. Again, if you look at it, if you look at general statutes and what we are minimally required to do and fund for the schools, it would be six-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars less than what we're funding right now. So we're, you know, statutorily wise, we're funding above and beyond what is required as far as general operating. Again, there's been a lot of discussion about Edgewood Schools. If the board is remembering, we had a discussion as part of the funding for the six, seventeen bond was that those cost savings that were supposed to be generated from the closing of Edgewood Schools. For some issue, reason that this wing was not built, so the school is still open, so that there is not a cost savings there. So we have now reinstituted back five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand dollars into their general operating so that they can operate Edgewood School. Again, we took out half a year's funding last year because we, we were under the impression that the Edgewood School was coming online. We took out half a year funding. It didn't come online. So now we're reinstituting back the full cost savings that was agreed upon in the funding agreement between the county and the school board. Any questions on that before I move over? And please jump in at any time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I take it that we'll have full discussions on each one of these points in our budget discussion.
Yes. Yes, this, this is just.
I will reserve my comment.
Okay. This is really just an, an overview for you.
Okay.
And then I'm going to, at, at the end of this, I'm going to read the conclusion to the budget message. I won't read the full six pages.
All right.
But again, we're looking, you know, very generally, we're looking at a one percent cost of living for our county employees with a possibility of up to one percent merit if qualified due to performance review. If you remember, this is what we did last year as well as far as how we paid our employees with increases. We've had some health increases this year, but again, six percent is nominal compared to many other counties and many other agencies that have gotten double-digit increases. So with the six percent increase to our health insurance, we are not looking at any planned changes at this time. But again, it's a little bit more than it was last year. And one of the things that we've talked about, there's a mandate of one-point-two percent increase with respect to the local government retirement system with respect to the employer contribution. We have no choice on this, but if you add up all our employees and the one-point-two percent, that's a four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar mandate that we have no choice but to budget for and to pay.
Quick comment on that. If my understanding is correct, it also goes up next year, the following year.
Couple of years. Yes, sir. You're, you're exactly right.
So we're going to have four-forty this year, but maybe an additional to the four-forty, two-hundred or three-hundred thousand next year.
Yes, sir. And, and this is at the recommendation of the, the state treasurer. And that, and he, and I agree, wanting to make sure that this system is funded right, funded well, and, and funded fully, that, that there did need to be an increase in the state retirement system, or at least employer contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
We are looking at some new positions, three paramedics. And again, we have added one additional station at Miller's Chapel. So this will be to fund that Miller's Chapel station. And again, hopefully Miller's Chapel will be open in the next forty-five days, I believe, is what we're looking at.
Quick, quick.
Yes, sir.
And you, was in last year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
So we need three paramedics, three MT positions, fill out a full shift and crew at that substation. We are looking at one administrative assistant for fleet management. We're trying to do some things a little bit differently in fleet and how we're scheduling and billing. And in looking at our, our staffing levels, we really feel like that this would help with the efficiencies and hopefully keep the costs down with respect to fleet. In working with our auditor, we would like recommend a payroll technician from the sheriff's office. The sheriff's department has had multiple people doing payroll, and we're trying to consolidate in that, the one position, hopefully to give, again, some consistency as well. And one conversion from a, a part-time to a full-time in public affairs and a conversion to a part-time to a full-time in solid waste. And, and again, we'll talk about this in great detail during our budget workshops. But again, just want to give you this quick overview. Again, as Mitch talked about, these are what we're looking at with respect to our major capital expenditures in our CIP. Three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, two new ambulances, one for Wayne Net and one for EMS. Again, we're trying to get on a vehicle replacement budget with respect to the sheriff's department. And, and again, if we talked about before about how we would like to do our CIP, we're putting the CIP funds separately than they're operating. So we're going to keep all our CIP funds separate, so it's not part of the operating budgets for our departments. So if there's any cost savings, you know, if we budget four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for cars for the sheriff and only spend three-seventy-five, then that fifty thousand dollars that is remaining will stay in the CIP fund. So we're trying to capture all the, the usage for our CIP into one fund. Again, as Mitch mentioned, we are looking at some debt financing, and it's about six-point-three million dollars worth of debt financing. One is voting machines, which is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Number two is radio tower and backup system. As the board is aware, we have had some issues, especially with Florence, that kind of showed some weaknesses in our system. We have some lack of coverage. We, our, our backup to the backup went down. We felt like that this was a time that really we needed to make sure that our radio system was in, in the shape that it needs to be. And, and again, Florence kind of showed us some of the weaknesses that we had. And as the board's aware, we wanted to go ahead instead of looking at financing separately, the, our financial software, it just include our financial software package upgrade as part of our debt financing. And that's about one-point-two, one-point-two million. So a lot of different projects trying to do. Yes, sir.
The six-point-three million, have you added all the different items above that six-point-three to get to the six-point-three?
That is in addition, the, the, the vehicles, the sheriffs, the ambulances, that's separate.
From the six-point-three?
Yeah, the, those that we will be self-paying this year. Those would not be debt financed. Those will be part of the budget that we will self-pay this year. So.
How much do you say that the radio backup towers, how much of that is for that?
Two-point-three, two-point-three.
I got it right here, just kidding. Are we that many towers short?
Two towers short. I think we're replacing a third tower. There's some generators. There's some backup. I forgot the name. What is, is the acronym? Or, the, Chip, do you remember the name of the backup piece that we're getting?
Microwave system.
Yeah, we're, we're improving the microwave system, but there's also some backup pieces that we are replacing that did not work and crashed during Florence.
And I know we've gotten these different presentations at different times. I just do not remember voting machines. Is that something very recent, or were we presenting that early on?
He, this is really something we just added. He has been asking for, for a couple of years now. But voting machines are wearing out. And we wanted to go ahead and try to get them in, especially before 2020.
You did say all this is going to be discussed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay.
During part of the debt financing, the DSS renovation.
Right. There's also $2 million that we set aside for DSS as far as renovation of the bus.
But not to-
Isn't that 6.3?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, shouldn't it be listed?
I, we got it listed.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Now you're making sense. Okay.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Not, not to beat this to the manager, but this 6.3 sort of goes back to the whole broader discussion that do we add a capacity, but do we do it? I mean, I'm not talking about we're getting ready to eliminate. I'm just saying, but it is in that broader discussion.
Right.
Are you able to do something, or is it smart to do something? That's, I think that's where we're-
And, and, and I agree, and that's what we have to talk, but some of these things, we, especially on the radio side, we have kicked some of these things down the road. And we're at the end of the road.
It seems like it's a never-ending thing. We've been paying for this radio system for seven and a half years I've been on this board.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Debt service, that, that $6.3 million of debt service be added into the current debt service that we have already?
It, the debt- It wouldn't have to be until the next year's budget.
Yeah, but it's going to have to be paid out of the revenues that we're, that we'll be collecting, property taxes. It'll have to be, it's got to come from somewhere. I mean, you, you put on that service, you got to figure out how you're going to pay for it. At least that's where I triggered my little head. So that, that's just worth saying, while we have that screen up there, it's just worth saying that-
Right.
-that is going to be, have to be figured into what dollars we're getting right now from where, which means-
If we borrowed the money, it would probably not be until towards the end of this year. So our first debt payment would not be until after July 1 of next year.
So you do not have in the budget any funds for repayment of that debt?
Not for this year, no, sir.
All right.
So, let me, so then we're counting on that money coming out of the revale, or sales taxes, or-
Barn.
Sir?
Or barn.
Well, if we borrow, we got to hit, but I mean, yeah, I know barn is a barn, but we got, my mind is always on the paying it back.
We're, we're looking at a 15-year, so you're 300?
If you look at page 18 of the presentation that Ted made, that's, that is the repayment model that he presented to you. And he has got, he has that new debt layered in there.
Right.
That's on page 15.
Yes, 18.
18.
Yes, sir.
And that's why, he said that in 2022, that you would probably, you know, to make sure we kept up with everything, you would probably look at a 1.8 cent increase in taxes to keep at the current level.
Right, right.
That's just to keep up with the current level.
Now, that is making an assumption, that, that is keeping some things level, like your, your revenues. You, you hope that in a few years, your revenues are going to continue to grow, but we don't, we don't know what those numbers are. So that's making some assumptions, you know, that we're keeping our revenues level. All things being equal right now, this is what they would propose. And then in 2022, that's what you would see.
And, and again, once we get it to the revenue side, we have had some growth in revenue. If you look at last year, we budgeted a very flat revenue for sales tax.
Correct.
And we had an increase. So, so we, you know, we are seeing some growth in, in some of our revenue sources as well. So we're, you know, trying to do everything we can to maximize revenues.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Just a quick, all, all of our volunteer fire departments, again, when there's a, in your budget, there'll be a chart that says current rate, revale rate as well. But nobody has asked for an increase of their current rate, except for Polly Watson asking for a 2 cent increase from 6 cents to 8 cents. So, then, next steps, copies of this proposed budget will be filed today with clerk, the county clerk's office. We will be setting a public hearing today for June 4, 2019. I believe that'll be at 9:30 in the morning that it is set. Budget adoption, we're looking at, again, it can happen anytime after the 4th, but looking at adoption by the 20th. But we do have a couple of, of pre-scheduled workshops with the board. And we can have as many as we need until we can get a budget passed that you're happy with. So, and again, I want to thank to staff, Allison and her staff yesterday. We're changing out pages at about 4:30 yesterday afternoon, and, and want to thank them for what they've done. If, if the board's okay, I, I just wanted to read the conclusion of my budget message instead of the sixth page, but I will read the conclusion of the budget message. This budget is one of a mixed bag for Wayne County. Revaluation is causing many of our property valuations to increase. However, we're recommending that we keep our tax rate at 66 and 3/5 cents. Remember, this is an eight-year valuation cycle. Property valuation should increase slightly due to market changes. Again, some people will have theirs go up, some will go down, dependent upon their current valuation. However, state statute requires that it must be at 100% of market valuation. So again, the question would be, when you get your valuation in, would you sell your property? Is that a fair price for what they're asking for your, we're putting the valuation on? If you think it's a fair market value, then it's a fair value. So, but we really currently work for many of our projects in our CIP, especially in communications, as we have had deficits in our system during Hurricane Florence that we need to repair. We are continuing to address the issues facing with Wayne County from schools to facilities while trying to keep our tax rate the same. We understand the issues and concern raised by Wayne County Public School System and are working with them to try to resolve these issues. However, the increases that they have proposed this year are not realistic considering our current budget restrictions and state of our county economy. With two major hurricanes battering our county in the past three years, Matthew and Florence, we need to work with our agriculture community and business community to make sure that they get back stable before we take such large financial obligations on by the county. We are also addressing our most important resource in our county, which are our employees. With no changes in our health insurance plan this year, mandated increases to employment, employee retirement contributions, along with providing COLA and merit opportunities for our employees, we continue to value and appreciate them and the work that they do for the citizens of Wayne County. I believe this budget contains a continuation of the major goals and objectives agreed to at the Board of Commissioners' budget retreat that we had back in January. Completing all the projects and services improvements budgeted herein was resulting in a number of significant improvements in the community. I want to commend the Board of Commissioners for planning the long-term capital needs for this county and committing the financial resources to assure that these plans become reality. And again, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the numerous hours of staff time that have gone into the budget prep for this presentation. I want to particularly thank Assistant County Manager Chip Crumpler, Finance Director Allison Spade, Budget Officer Janice Rice, Assistant Finance Director Angie Boswell, Purchasing Agent Noel Woods, IT Project Manager Ron Preble, and Human Resources Director Geraldine Lee, and Assistant Director Ginger Moore, and our entire Finance Department for their work on this document. Every department had, had built not only a quest of operating bu, for their operating budget, but a projection of capital needs for the next five years. They and their staffs are to be commended and complimented on their work. I thank them all for their efforts in timeless, in, in a timeless manner in completing the budget document. It has truly been a team effort. Again, we, it goes on, talk about the schedule and the public hearing. And again, we present this to you for your consideration. And again, this is your budget now. We will make the changes that you would like to see made in this budget. What we try to do is try to incorporate things that we hear throughout the year that become important to you. And we try to incorporate that as part of this document. If we miss something, or if we did not, if things have changed, then we're willing to go back and make all the changes that are necessary to give you a budget that you can truly support. Any questions?
Just a clear, clarification on one thing. You, you mentioned maintaining the same tax rate we've got now because of the two hurricanes. And you mentioned the farmer community and the business community. Don't forget the individual homeowners. It might, might be the same scale, but they were affected just as much as the farmer community and the, and the businesses were. I mean, we've got to keep that in mind now. I mean, you know, some people pay a lot more tax than others, but some of the ones that pays the least might be struggling the hardest.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have, am I correct in assuming that this budget is not revenue neutral?
Yes, sir. It is not revenue neutral. It is at the current tax rate.
Because we're having to, to pull money from our fund balance to balance the budget to the tune of about, I think you, on your presentation, 2.4?
Or 2.9.
Or 2.9?
Yes, sir. Well, and, and, and again, part of the thought process was with revaluation, you know, is based upon a valuation that was eight years ago. And, and there should be some nominal increases in values that, that property owners should expect over the past eight years.
Okay. I'm, I'm having, I'm having a little bit of a, I know back in 2012, back in 2012, because of being revenue neutral, we were able to give a tax decrease. It's makes sense if you're going to use that same scenario, that if you don't have a revenue neutral budget and it requires a tax increase, you do the same. That's all I'm saying. I mean, we're, we're going to keep taking money from, again, the fund balance to make the budget balanced. But I like to see a balanced budget, is, is all I'm saying. So, but the problem is, we still don't know what the revale, how it's going to affect our revenue either. So that figure's going down every year. Maybe we, what you're saying is, is that let's don't do anything, let's just let it ride out. And in two, three years, we should be-
Well, well, we've figured growth. We have figured growth and growth in, in valuation.
Yeah.
So, so, so that, you know, in working with, with Tax Department and also work on Finance, we have figured growth inside. And that's the reason why the revenue neutral rate is lower than our current rate. So about a penny and a half.
Uh huh, okay.
So.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on something Mr. Acop said. Thank Mr. Acop for bringing attention to all the population that had difficulties during the storms. I've come in contact with, and we've had a gentleman come in here several times, and I've visited his home site. And others of us who may venture into rental property and those kinds of things suffer the same kind of losses that I hear that's being discussed about the farming community and so forth and so on. So whenever we talk about any one segment of the population, I, I like to thank Mr. Acop for just bringing up other segments of the population. And so just let's, we don't need to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And you're up next. Whoa, 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 I'm sorry. We need a motion on this.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe that we establish a public hearing on June the 4th at 9:30 a.m. to receive public comments regarding the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget.
I should make Mr. Darien discussion. If not, we'll proceed all in favor to see the vibration right here. Thank you. Now, comments.
And, and again, really, no additional comments. I just want to remind you of our two workshops that we have scheduled for next Wednesday and Thursday. And, and again, if you have questions or concerns or information that you need before the workshops, is let us know. We'll try to have those, that information ready for you before the meeting. And that is all I have.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They had a library board meeting last week, last Friday. And if you, if you're not, if you're not involved in the library, we, we have, we have this discussion all the time. The library is much, much more than a library. It's all inclusive. You can go to the library and, and the library is involved in all kinds of aspects of county and people. I, I never realized that until I was able to serve on the library board. The, yesterday, we had our Department of Social Services meeting in which that was the last meeting for Tammy Schrenker, our director that's leaving to go back to her home county. And of course, it was a time to give her a time of thank you and so forth. We gave a plaque to her for her appreciation, an appreciation plaque. And there was sort of some bittersweet moments because we had, she had become a part of DSS, and she was honest. She said, out of the jobs that she's had in her career, this was, she had to do the most praying on this decision of any job she's ever had. She'd really grown to love Wayne County and of course, the staff and so forth at DSS. But on the other side of this, Kim Maguire, our new director, is going to be May 24th, and, and I've got it pinned down now, 2 o'clock, she's going to be sworn in as our new DSS director. And again, I want to say that because of the county participation, which has been much, much more the last three or four years coming together, and what the commissioners are doing, we as a DSS board, we feel really comfortable in moving forward with Kim Maguire being our new DSS director. Our county manager was there yesterday, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Gomarati is, is on our board. And, but I want, I can't, I can't let this moment pass without saying this, Mr. Chairman. You know, you don't hear very much about DSS, but we, we, way back when Earl Merritt came as interim and then Tammy came on, when we saw the figures yesterday of a couple of departments that we have been underperforming for two and three and four years because of the changes that have been made in policies and in some cases, maybe some personnel changes. We have had some figures, and Craig, you were sitting right there, Mr. Parker, these figures were so impressive as to- these figures were so impressive as to how far we've come, for example, if we had thirteen mandates by the state that we needed to meet percentage-wise, three or four years ago, eight or nine of those, maybe ten, we weren't meeting, yesterday, we had met all those except two, that's because this management and DSS and the dedicated employees at DSS are turning this thing around, well, matter of fact, it's already turned around, we just have different areas we need to go to improve, uh, the services to our citizen, so, I, I'm, I'm really proud to be a part of this DSS, because I have seen the evolution of improvement the last three or four years, like I haven't seen in a lot of departments, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Camardi.
I thank Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, uh, maybe i- in his absence, thank Mr. Barry Merrill for, uh, his strong advocacy for, um, trying to talk about and do things to improve education in Wayne County, I would specifically like to thank him and, and Advocacy Group, I think that's what it would be called, that probably attended the school board meeting and to advocate for some items that was on the agenda, I thank Southern Wayne, Jim was one of them, and I wanna thank him and thank the Board of Education for moving forward on, uh, the Southern Wayne Project, we look forward to seeing some dirt turn, uh, down there, parents gonna be real excited, and we appreciate everything that the school board has done in those directions, uh, but Mr. Merrill, uh, maybe captured where we at, uh, he said that, and it was when I first came on the board about six years ago, uh, he captured the fact that, uh, this board lowered the tax rate, uh, he said five cents, I'm not sure exactly what's that, I think somewhere between three point five and four and a half, something like that, I, I was just a ballpark, I couldn't remember exactly what he said, but I know that, uh, that we lowered it, um, that was, that was some tax relief for all the citizens of Wayne County, and looking at, uh, what's around us, I and other folk that pay property taxes may have to say our prayers and may have to do some restoring, not raising the tax, but just restoring it back to what it was, uh, in, in, uh, in previous times, and my colleague John Bill, he always likes to point out that we're spending money and not taking enough in, and so, I, I use some of what I hear sometimes just to try to capture where we are, but for Wayne County, and for us to move forward, there're gonna be some, uh, hard decisions will have to be made, capacity and, and going forward is two different things, thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dory?
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Acoff?
Yes, sir, just a couple of things, uh, I attended the appreciation dinner out at the Maxwell Center for all the law enforcement in the county, uh, had a decent turnout, I would like to send a little larger crowd, but a good, decent turnout, also attended the Friends of Seymour Gala, uh, great turnout for that, great speaker, they're one of the under secretaries of the, uh, Air Force, he was an army guy, but he's still done a pretty good job, uh, also, uh, wanted to remind you all of the appreciation dinner for our EMS, uh, people tomorrow night at the Maxwell Center, and, uh, also, just for information, uh, we just got word this past week, uh, fifteen of the rural fire departments applied for a fifty-fifty grant, uh, through the state, and, uh, all fifteen of them were granted at a hundred percent, uh, and like I said, that was fifteen departments in the county, and the total was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cent, and, uh, that was just a fifty-fifty max now, they got, they had to provide, uh, information to the state on what their needs were, and I think it's great that, that Wayne County got a hundred percent of, of what was asked for, uh, wish a few more departments had applied, but, and that's, that's, that's their, their thing, uh, and one more, I'd like to clarify one thing, uh, that was said earlier in the meeting, we did not have a tax increase last year, did we?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that was stated.
One recommended, uh, and the manager's budget recommended, I think, a two and a half cent tax increase, but through the budget process, the board said this was not the right time for a tax increase, and we went back to what the, uh, current rate is, the sixty-six through five.
Well, that was mentioned, you know, said in earlier that we had a tax increase last year, I wanna clarify that, we did not have a tax increase last year.
No, sir.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, now it's gonna be interesting to see what Mr. Bill has to say.
Thank you.
You looked a little bruised up down there.
No, I'm not bruised, ask me for it, you want me to say something?
Yeah, yeah.
What do you want me to say?
I just want you to make your comments, to, you know, I wanna, you know, you, you taken a whole lot of heat in the last few days, and I just, you know, you got a tough skin, I just.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not chairman.
I'm gonna answer Mr. Acoff's, uh, uh, question there, he was asking me if I was gonna make any comment as to what was in the newspaper about the episode, and I just wanted to be understood that I do not and will not make comments to staff. I was talking to elected officials and school administration, not a staff member, so that's the end of my comment. Thank you, Mr. Bill. I'd like to mention, um, the recent passing of Ms. Peggy Seagres last week, she's a very dear person in Wayne County, very special person, very spirited person, and was, uh, time or two or three hours, they would be around, and she's very inspirational, and she was a mentor for all of Wayne County older adults, and she's truly, um, an inspirational lady, and because of her, we have such a nice senior center that we have that's recognized across the state for her leadership, the foundation she built to, um, have our new senior center, and to all presenters today, thank y'all for being here, we, we learned a lot, it's always good to get updates, and Ryan, good luck to the, your team, this is, this is an awesome experience with those young kids, it takes a heck of a commitment from them and the family, 'cause I know y'all do a lot of traveling, but this is an awesome experience, I love every minute of it, and, uh, I see we got a, two or three, three Wayne County Public School officials here, now, if y'all want to join in here with me and, and correct me, you can, but don't take this personal, okay, now, really, I just wanted to mention that Roswood High School Eagles baseball team starts their Eastern Regional Quest today, best two or three, and they'll be playing at home tonight at seven o'clock against Bear Grass Charters, if I'm correct, um, everybody come out and support the guys, Coach King and those guys have done a great job so far this year, and I look forward to advancing on to the state finals, but that's all I have, if nothing else, we will be going back to closed session.
The same reasons you went in this morning.
To have a motion.
A motion.
So move on, favor, signify, raise your right hand, thank you.